Oh, the right.
You want to move these away?
Yeah, we're telling them. Yeah, but you're going second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I'm gonna, uh...
Please.
Call the meeting to order. This is City Council Study Session September 11th, 2017. And would you please do roll call?
Get the rear wheels.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember De Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Trautmannwell.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead. There are no announcements, reports, or presentations. Then we're gonna start with Item A, which is the Auburn-Boeing Fabrication Site Remedial Investigation Report. This is an annual briefing done by the Department of Ecology, and they have 30 minutes. Maybe less.[74.31][74.31](Laughter).
Thank you. So, for the record, I'm Jenna Leonard. I'm the Environmental Services Manager with Environmental Services, and I'm happy to welcome Neil Hines and Thea Levkowitz from Department of Ecology here to give their annual report on the Boeing remedial investigation. So, I'm gonna let them come up, so I'm not crowding, but I do have handouts that I'll start around.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And we need to make sure that one of the handouts gets to our clerk.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Welcome, and thank you very much for our annual update.
Yeah, thanks. I was here last year to provide an update. It's good to see people here again, to keep people informed about what's going on with this project. I think this might be the third one we've done. Let's see, so this is the Auburn Environmental Park, which is a wonderful shot, and what I wanted to show here is the timeline for cleanup investigation for State of Washington, follows this process, and the remedial investigation report is where we're at, where it says we are right here. That's a report that documents the extent of impacts of the Boeing Auburn TCE spills. This was a degreaser that was used to degrease oils off of the aluminum parts, and over about three and a half decades, TCE dripped into the ground, caused a spill, and there's been an extensive investigation, which I'm glad to report. We have a draft remedial investigation from Boeing. We've looked at it. We've done an internal review. It was out for public comment, a 60-day public comment, March 8th through May 8th, and Ecology responded to about 30 different comments that we received from... And Thea Levkowitz actually assembled the public responses that we got for this investigation in the public comment period. I'm just gonna let her give a spiel about that.
It'll be very short. I do have a copy, and there's other copies on our website, and I'll leave this with you. Like Neil said, we had a 60-day comment period because it's been of such concern to both the City of Auburn and certainly the city and the residents of Algonah. So, we had a long comment period. We held two public meetings. One was an actual official public hearing. Not that many folks came. As you know, we've been in regular contact with the City of Auburn for a fairly long period of time, so we weren't surprised that we didn't get a lot of comments. We got, for the most part, we got very few technical comments, like, "You should do this," and "We need you to do that." Most things were of more general concern to people that live in the area, things about property values and health effects, all of those things that we've been addressed. So, this is the report, and we are now really moving on to the feasibility study, which is essentially how we're gonna get it cleaned up.
Yeah, and we're gonna hopefully pick up steam. One of the responses that we get is, "Why do you guys go so slow in these things?" And it's because to drill wells, to step out and try to determine the full impact takes a lot of resources to do. There's 250 monitoring wells. There's been surface water studies, soil studies, air studies, and it takes a lot of time to make sure that you're sampling in the right spot for those. So, the feasibility study will outline the remedies that can be applied to clean up low concentrations of these degreaser solvents in the groundwater. Feasibility study mid-2018 is right here, and we'll keep you informed. I will work with Jenna Leonard. We also have a good working relationship with Alexandra Teague. And I talk on the phone if there's a development project. We want to make sure that any developments don't overlap with this. If there's any hazards to workers, et cetera, that we make those clear. There haven't been to date, but that communication has been really key to maintain. So, contamination, TCE, trichloroethane can get into groundwater, surface water, soil, and air. It's limited solubility, but once it gets dissolved in the groundwater, it can move relatively fast down here, about 300 feet per year. So, we test all of these media: surface waters, surface waters, groundwater, all the way down to the silty mud flow that prevents water from further going below. We test air spaces, soil air spaces, and the big one, of course, is the groundwater media because we're concerned about potential development of water resources, particularly groundwater, in the future as the public water supply has needs and wants to put other wells. So, at about 35 to 75 feet down, this is the footprint. We've shown the council days before. There's two source areas of Boeing Auburn facility. Here, a degreaser that operated over here, and then a western boundary. Groundwater flows in this direction that the arrows are moving in, and you can see it's spread out over a mile down gradient or downstream in the earth. And then, we ring this with a tier of wells out here would be non-detect in the wells furthest out here, and then even down in the tributary to Mill Creek. We've done monitoring there, and we've got some additional monitoring that we've asked to do in the creek itself to make sure that there's no impacts going downstream.
Uh-oh.[432.47][432.47](Laughter).
So, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Groundwater, 0 to 30 feet, this is a little bit more concern to individuals because it would be shallow in the ground, and we fielded a lot of questions from people saying, "If I dig in my yard, do I have any worries?" The answer to that is no. The highest concentrations in these surface waters here are around what the drinking water standard would be. That says five micrograms per liter, which is the same as parts per billion. That is the drinking water standard, five parts per billion, but there's no water resources drawn from this area anywhere in here for drinking purposes. But the concern, of course, is, is would there be any connection, potential connection? The answer to that is yes. And then, from the past, would there be any, would there have been any connections from the past? And we've reviewed all of the data that goes back to the late '80s, and we haven't seen a pattern that indicates that whatever the drinking water wells here have shown would be from the Boeing Auburn site. There's been some PCE and TCE detections, but this was just TCE, and so seeing that pattern there, and they've been below drinking water standards. After 2006, no detects in any of the wells throughout Auburn, but it's an eye that we keep on that data. We always field questions from concerned citizens, and I want to pass on to you guys. You have our contact information also through Jenna. If people do have concerns, please connect them to us. It's always good to have one-on-one conversations that we can create a relationship with people. Again, I think the biggest concern has been in the City of Algonah because this is that corner of Algonah that has some property that overlaps with where the groundwater concentrations are, but yet these concentrations are still fairly low.
Councilmember Trautmannwell.
My question is, on this picture here, you have, have you found any vapors go into people's homes in the basement in cracks and stuff?
Right.
And if you have, what did you do to correct it?
So, we haven't found a pathway indicating that vapors from the groundwater would be escaping up into the home air in the cracks, in crawl spaces, et cetera. There's been home air studies in this area down here, just in this corner here. 24 homes were invited to do residential home air testing, both in the winter and the summer, and then right along 15th Street southwest by the Outlet Mall as well, and in the Outlet Mall as well, in the basements. And there were some detections of TCE, but it was very limited, and it was a pattern that didn't indicate that that process of the vapors coming up into the building was the cause of it. We did re-sampling. You've got water, you've got soil air, and then you've got the indoor air, and you'd expect to see a concentration profile there that points to the pathway. Detentions in all of those, or the re-sampling was very key. And then, we also did calculations, even at those worst-case scenarios, to identify if people were breathing those concentrations, would it be a health risk to them? And the answer to that was no.
And what's the high level of concern?
Yeah, so, it's two micrograms per cubic meter of air, and that's the health concern number. We haven't had anything that's at that level. The highest has been 1.1 micrograms per cubic meters, and that was not in Auburn. That was in a second-floor residence in Algonah where the first floor was all non-detect. So, you'd expect, since these are dense vapors, the first floor should have had some detections if it was indeed coming from the ground. That was an interesting case. We resampled twice, actually, at that home to see if it could be reproduced, and it wasn't. So, you get a handful of detections of these chemicals, and trying to actually identify, is it coming from the ground, has been, we haven't been able to do that. They're common solvents. They're in things like spray adhesive. So, but it's been a very big concern of ours to document that pathway.
Councilmember Wagner.
Above 15th, I guess it is, up along the west side of the plume. I don't see any black dots there. Why is that?
Right, right. So, this map is partial. All of the sampling points are not located on this, but coastal, out in this area, out here, there's some Department of Transportation wells. We have sediment-poor water, two here, two here. There's wells up here, so the base map here with the actual wells or sampling points isn't complete, but I appreciate you bringing that detail. Any other questions at the map portion? Here, all of this is available on the Ecology website for the project as well, so if anybody wants that link, just come up to us here, or get the card through Jenna Leonard, and we can create a hyperlink, so you can click right on it. We can give you copies of the maps. We can mail maps to anybody who's interested.
And do those maps show all of the black dots, or are they still like this one?
No, they should be more complete. The reason why we have it this way is that there's so many black dots that it becomes kind of a hurricane of dots on the page, and we want the focus of this to be on the colored splotches here, and this is five. Again, that's the drinking water standard. The highest cer... close to the surface groundwater concentration has been between 5 and 10 here, so it's just a little bit above the drinking water standard. State of Washington cleanups levels are much lower than that, at least tenfold below that. So, we live in a state that's got very stringent requirements for cleaning up things like this, and it makes it difficult for polluters, but I think that's to the benefit of citizens to know that that safeguard is there. Let's see. If we go down to the next page here, let's see. So, I just mentioned that the cleanup for surface water will be more stringent than the drinking water standard, and I was talking about groundwater before, but some of the surface water bodies throughout the area relevant to City of Auburn is these Auburn North and South detention basins or stormwater ponds right here. These have not had detections of any of the chemicals, nor the Outlet Collections Stormwater Pond right up here, and then there's a trench right along here that drains in this direction to that pond. Again, no concentrations of TCE or its breakdown products in these waters here, but yet in the groundwater right in this area here, you will have detections. But, of course, we're concerned about groundwater that may emerge into ponds or surface water features. The most consistent detections in the surface water body have been right about here at the Chicago Avenue ditch. Non-detect right here, but you come right about there, and the highest one has been 1.9 parts per billion. Surface water cleanup level is 0.3, so there's more than an order of magnitude of cleanup that has to go on there. Again, the drinking water standard, for just a point of reference for people, is five. So, surface water results, just in tabular form. The ones relevant to City of Auburn, O Street Wetland, that's right south of the entrance to the Outlet Mall at Los Cabos, south of Los Cabos. No detections of contaminants there in the environmental park, no detections at the Outlet Collection ponds, no detection, and then the stormwater ponds. Some detection of contaminants above the most stringent surface water quality criteria. So, I believe I spoke in error here. I think I said on the previous one that there were no detections. There had been some detections above what the surface water criteria is, 0.3, but one of the concerns we've had is if people were to splash in that water, or say, an animal were to go down there and drink it, would they be at risk? And we haven't determined that there would be any risk for that type of exposure.
Councilmember Pelosi, and then Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you. Government Canal, is that in the City of Auburn?
No, that goes south. Let me go back to the map here. It's down in this area. Come on, cursor. So, Government Canal drains the south part of the Boeing Auburn facility here. It doesn't, I haven't seen any discharge from this. I go down there to take a look at things, but residents have reported a number of things down in that area to me, ranging from smells to red soils down there, and I've seen a lot of folks, pictures that they've snapped and sent to me, but there's iron bacteria that reduce iron and create a hematite precipitate, and it looks super red when you look at it.
Is that Algonah?
It's in Algonah into Pacific down here.
Yeah, how about O Street? Is that Auburn?
O Street is actually south of, I might need some help, 15th Street southwest. This is mislabeled 18th. It's actually 15th Street southwest here, between that and, I think this is Boundary Boulevard right here, but there's a block down there.
A portion of it is Auburn there.
Is that, that is Auburn? How about Chicago Avenue?
That's Algonah.
Algonah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Baggett.
Quick question. Briefly, could you describe what your process is for decontaminating groundwater?
Sure, sure. So, well, during sampling, there's any water that's, instruments that have touched contaminated water get cleaned off, and then that rinse water gets containerized into drums and then gets treated. It doesn't get discharged into the sewer system at all.
It's not a dilution process at all? You actually remove the water?
Yeah, that's right. There isn't any well sites or soil samples that are suspect of having contamination. The instruments that are used, all that water is containerized and not permitted.
Yeah, my former Boeing Environmental Services gentleman, he used to say, "Dilution is no solution to pollution."
Sure.[1107.73][1107.73](Laughter). And it used to be dilution is the solution to pollution, and then we got smart and realized, "Well, you can do that for so long until you can't rely on that." And then, the State of Washington's laws do not allow polluters to use dilution in calculations about what's happening to their contaminants, so...
Thank you.
Yep, so, let's look at this slide because this is on the Boeing property. Again, this is 18th, or 18th Street, should be 15th Street southwest, right up here. And some of the buildings on the Boeing property are outlined here in A, B, C, D, E, F here. And so, there's ongoing investigations to make sure that groundwaters and soils are gonna be cleaned up on the property there, but the real concern from a residential perspective is, are any of the contaminants migrating off-site? And that would be mostly in the north to northwest direction, where the cursor is moving this way here. And that's what the previous maps were documenting. It goes 0 to 30 feet, water table of groundwater, 0 to 30 feet, 35 to 75 feet, 75 feet to 100, and then the operations for sampling hit the Osceola mud flow. They see it, they feel like, "Aha, that's the Osceola mud flow," and they don't go any further because they don't want to put holes in that aquitard of clay down there. It's always been a question at one of our public comment meetings. Somebody said, "Well, I want to know what's below there." And we don't have a very extensive network. There's only a few wells from early days that are in that area, but several miles to the east and northeast are, of course, the city's wells, which go down about 250 feet. So, that would be a lousy use for being part of the monitoring network, but those wells are far enough away that that transport of those contaminants, first, it's in the wrong direction. It's going about 90 degrees in the wrong direction, and then it would have to get through that clay layer, the Osceola mud flow, and get down another 100, 150 feet into that layer. So, I worked with Susan Fenhaus, Lisa Tobin, reviewing the states, the Safe Drinking Water Act data. Again, we haven't seen detections since 2006, but it's always an ongoing concern that we keep an eye out just to make sure that those, there isn't some pathway through which things can leak.
Councilmember Trautmannwell.
Neil, how often do you go out and take samples of each site?
Right.
Water, air, and...
Yeah, so, the air investigation was winter and summer, 2013, 2014, and it didn't form the basis upon which to say, "We're seeing the impacts," or "There's reason to go on with further sampling of this." It's a big deal to go into people's homes, and you don't want to say, "Oh, well, maybe we missed it," or, you know. We look at the groundwater data to see if there's changes in the pattern, if things are moving through. We haven't seen that. This is a stable, legacy impact that's in the ground, and, you know, Chris Anderson, he was here, he asked me, quite frankly, "Is it coming at us as the worst in there?" And we're gonna see higher concentrations coming through, and I said to him, "No, it's the opposite. This happened 35, 25, 15, or 1990 and before, so 30 years, 40 years, 45 years ago, and most of that contamination has either degraded, diluted, or is at a point where we're seeing the tail end of things." And the present-day volume of TCE that's in the ground throughout this entire footprint area here is less than 10 gallons worth of TCE. So, that's an important thing to keep in perspective in mind. The thing that we don't know is that the cumulative leaks off of the pipe network at the facility, how much would have spilled, and that volume estimate, I don't have an answer for. I can try to back-calculate it off of what the degradation of the stuff is, but those rates of degradation aren't widely reported. I can look at other well sites on the property and try to do some estimates, but I make that calculation to try to identify, are we dealing with something like tanker trucks worth of the stuff that was spilled? No, we're not dealing with that. We're dealing with more of drip-wise off of the piping network, and this is consistent with what Boeing employees have told us, have observed at the site, or at its worst-case scenario back in the '70s when you had a bucket, a five-gallon bucket, and some of this degreaser. You know, people thought it was like WD-40, that it wasn't dangerous at all. "Hey, what do you do with this stuff? We don't have waste handlers on board to take the stuff." That didn't happen until the '90s, and people would just pitch it into the wetland areas. So, you know, no fault of the workers. That changed with the hazardous waste laws. All this material now is collected. After 1990, Boeing did not use TCE at all. They realized, "Hey, this is gonna be a nightmare for us. There's alternatives." And TCE didn't become a drinking water contaminant until 1989 on a federal level from EPA. So, that's kind of the progression of that as an administrative part of the... It is a carcinogen, and then air quality. We were asking about that, and the areas here on the colored areas here are commercial testing in the purple here, so that includes the mall, the Outlet Collection, a number of buildings along 15th Street southwest on the Boeing property, of course, and that's where the extensive soil gas, and we want to identify right there if there's anything coming up out of the ground. There's been no identifications of what they call pooled sources, which is called a donaqueous phase liquid, which is like a pool of the stuff in the ground. This is much, much more diluted. If you take the water at the most contaminated stuff and you were to try to smell the contamination, you wouldn't even smell it at these levels. And then, of course, the residential testing here in the yellow for City of Algonah, and then, this was a summer/winter effort here, about 200 data points. There are about 15 detections there of TCE. I already cited what the highest one was in the second floor of that home at 1.1. Two micrograms per cubic meter is the health concern level for breathing air, and then no detections of vinyl chloride, and that's one of the chemicals that TCE breaks down to when it's in the ground. So, that's good news. We have a tabular summary here of the air quality results. I think it would be difficult to go through table data here, but, you know, you have a copy of this here, and Sampling Network in its key is down here, but, you know, briefly, the circles and the diamonds are listed for the various properties here. And we've been in touch with all of these buildings here to report to the building managers what's gone on there, what our assessment is, and, again, we don't see any health risks from breathing air in any of the buildings down here. There have been a handful of detections of TCE, but when the sampling has gone back to try to identify if it's reproducible, it hasn't been able to be reproduced. So, we talked about the feasibility study that's next, that outlines the different cleanup options, the different remedies for addressing contamination in the ground like this, evaluation for cleanup remediation technologies. When you're at concentrations this low, it becomes really difficult because there's not a lot there. As I said, less than 10 gallons spread out over, you know, a mile or two in the ground. So, getting things like bugs to clean it up, because bugs will, microbiology will back, bacteria will use this as a carbon source, but you're on a wetland here, and so there's these other organic compounds that you've probably seen in some of the waters here that are preferential, but that can feed some of the bugs. That's one of the options on the table. In 2004, 2005, there was an interim action on the Boeing property that used this technology, adding some sugars, feed the bugs, knocks down the concentration by an order of magnitude, so a tenfold decline. That would be useful to do if it can be demonstrated and it can work, but there will be other options that are considered in the analysis. Cost is not one of the determinants for Ecology's selection of the remedy unless it's so prohibitive that, you know, it's just ridiculous. But usually, even the more expensive ones, you know, that's the nature of the cleanup here, the likelihood of success. Timeline for implementation, we would hope that something like this would be implemented over, say, a 15- to 20-year time period to degrade these chemicals. And, again, the real concern is exposure pathways for people touching the water soil, breathing any of the air, or the drinking water, which we've identified is safe. And then, the actual cleanup levels for groundwater and surface water are proposed at the end of the feasibility study, but in order to know what technologies are gonna work at these levels, you need to have a ballpark estimate right now. So, we've put forth some of those right now at 0.3 for TCE in surface waters. And then, for vinyl chloride, it's reduced to 0.02 parts per billion. Thea talked about the response to public comments here. That was March 8th through May 8th, a 60-day hearing, a public comment period with a public hearing. We had an open house, public hearing. We had about 30 comments, and then responsiveness summary. Thea has a copy of that here in print, and then we also have it online as well, if people want to see a summary of how people responded. Finally, my name, Neil Hines, and my phone number, my email are here, and please, if there are questions that come up later, Jenna, Leonard, or Ingrid always have my contact information. And we found, you know, a phone call to try to head off any concerns. It's easy to let this stuff become really scary in your mind, but knowledge and communication and the fact that it's all open record, all the information is available to the public, and we can get it to... Any other questions from the council?
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate these annual updates.
Yeah.
And I think that that's the reason why your concerns and comments were so few is because you're kind of staying in front of them.
Hopefully.
And coming to us and being so open and transparent. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Notice the time. They did it in 30 minutes with hard questions.[1791.63][1791.63](Laughter). Okay, now, we're gonna go on to Item B. Ray of Hope Resource Center up... Okay, now we're going to go on to item B, Ray of Hope Resource Center update. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you. I would like you to welcome Debbie Christian from the Auburn Food Bank that you know, and Lori Ann Larson, who is the Director of Housing Services, is that correct?
Yes.
For Valley Cities for a quick update on our recently opened Ray of Hope Resource Center. Highly qualified individuals to update you on the progress.
Well, we opened a couple weeks ago. And it has been busy and full ever since. We're pretty excited about our ability to see what we can do to help people make a little bit of change in their life. And sometimes that little bit of change is just the fact that they need an ID or their driver's license back, and it can get them into another whole world of opportunity. Just having your driver's license and ID will get you back into jobs. So it'll also let you, you know, receive your mail at a location. It'll help you with DSHS and food stamps and all kinds of other places. So that was an easy fix for most of this. We know that there's a lot of large problems. And we are taking some intake information from each one and trying to then categorize these problems and see what we can do. Nothing in the larger scale of things will be fast, but it's giving them a piece of hope, a ray of hope, that there might be a chance at coming off the street and living differently from now on. And so that's been pretty exciting. I told you before, we're asking everybody to do something while they're there. They can't just sit and sleep and relax all day, even though life is hard on the street. It's tiring, and it's mentally exhausting. And so there will be some of that in the beginning. But right away, we started saying, you know, "There are cigarette butts outside on the sidewalk, and they're all around the building outside, not the building property, but the street. And could you go out and do that? Could you just go pick up cigarette butts?" That's a little... I mean, I don't want to do that. Who wants to go do that? But readily, people went out and did that. And one gentleman in particular, he made it from... He took from Cascade all the way up to I Street, and then he went to 26, which is the far side of Valley Cities, and came clear down to 24th and cleaned that whole area. And so you're stooping over. We finally bought garbage picker-uppers here the other day for him. But, you know, down on his hands, and he's picking up all of this stuff. And so we gave him a gift card to a fast-food restaurant for the weekend. There is no dinner on Saturday. There is one on Sunday afternoon. But that ended up being his only resource for food over the weekend and was that gift card that we had given him. So when I walked out Friday night, we were cleaning up and walking out, and one of the gentlemen said, "You know, I am so proud of this place. I really want to keep it clean and going." And so that was... That just really touched me. When we put the building on the property, one of the things we thought a lot about was the placement of the front doors. And we know that people in town, you, me, don't like what we see sometimes when we see grocery carts all over the place, piles of crud laying someplace. So let's move the front door so it's not to the street. So let's turn that building around so the back side is to the street. So that'll make a huge difference in visibility. There was a lot of overgrown brush there that hadn't been taken care of, and rightly so. This is just a piece of property that's been laying there. One of our homeless gentlemen has had a home a few years ago. He still has some of his tools. He brought his blower down and his lawn mower, and he mowed that whole thing and blew it all off. We needed skirting around the building. And I picked up the phone and called a friend. And I said, "Hey, Ron, I think you know somebody in the motor home business or the mobile home business. What do you think about putting skirting on that building?" And he said, "Consider it done." So skirting went in on Thursday morning all day. So we look a little bit more permanent. It looks really nice. And all free labor that came in. Valley Cities here one day said, "Oh, maybe we could buy that." And I said, "Do not buy anything without looking at it first. We're going to get free stuff. We're not going to pay to live here." So that's been coming along. People are donating a lot. So I put in, even on Facebook Friday morning, I said, "You know, we're going to start showers next week, and we need towels." And Eric Robertson went down to Fred Meyer immediately and came back with four sets of towels and hand rags. So, you know, that kind of generosity is out here. There's a lot of people who want to see this be a success. They want to see it be a success. We have several here tonight. I hired staff so that I'm not living over there, which is very helpful. So Valerie, would you wave? Valerie's our lead. And then Starla and Lauren.
Monday through Friday from 10:00 to 3:30, so stop by if you'd like.
Yeah. Lauren and Starla have also been resource people, workers for Valley Cities in the past. And so they have a lot of knowledge that they came with on resources. A couple of them back there, we've made lead volunteers in taking care of laundry and shower needs. We are... One of them is going to get his license, is also then going to drive the food bank van and volunteer. And when they need to get into Kent for getting their driver's license taken care of, because it's the only place to go now, he will be driving them over there for us. And so there will be a little bit of also maybe going around to, if we hear that someone's at the park and can't walk that far, don't have a bike or whatever, we can make some rounds and try to help pick them up and bring them over so that they can get there. So I'm pretty excited. It's been a blessing.
And I'm Lori Ann Larson. And I first wanted to apologize. He couldn't be here for a family emergency, so he has to speak today. I'm the Director of Housing. And I also work with all the homeless services, outreach services for Valley Cities. And one of the things that I would like to piggyback on with the driver's license, it may seem like a simple thing, but in order to get housing, you need a driver's license. And so it's a first step for everything. And so this is really great opportunity to move people through that continuum. They need a driver's license to get services. They need a driver's license to get employment. And so just having a place to get a driver's license to be able to sit down for a minute, you can start mapping out, "What can I do next?" And so where some people might say, "Oh, it's just a driver's license." It's one of the biggest pieces, along with the social security card. And so those are the pieces that we want to help to fill in the gaps. We're committed to helping the populations that are being served at the Ray of Hope. We see this as a continuum of our campus. I see that block as a campus. We have Valley Cities Landing, where we're serving older adults and veterans with housing and support services. We have now the Ray of Hope, where we can do the Day Center outreach. We have Phoenix Rising, where we're serving young adults. And we have the cafe, which will be opening up to the public very soon. And then we have our Auburn Clinic. And with that whole span of that Auburn campus, as I call it, we're able to meet all of the needs of the individuals who will be coming into the Ray of Hope, at least at some point. We have navigators and care coordinators that are coming over to check in with folks to see if there's any way that we can meet their needs. And then also showing them, "Hey, if you just want to come back over to Valley Cities, we can do an intake. We can, you know, what would you like? How can we meet you where you are? How can we support you?" And so we're doing everything in our power just to partner and support the community as well as the individuals who are coming to the Ray of Hope. Finally, I think the biggest piece that I've noticed is, prior to the Ray of Hope, we had a lot of challenges at Phoenix Rising with transients. And we have a security company. And the security company had been working really hard to try to minimize any of the issues that were happening with the young adults at Phoenix Rising. And we had a lot of people, transients, who were leaving a lot of trash and sleeping on the properties. And since Ray of Hope opened, it's actually decreased. And so we're going to have ups and downs. We're going to have cycles and trends. It's going to get better. And probably we'll have challenges where something might happen. But I think that by providing these services, we are able to give hope. And it gives people an opportunity to move forward with the next step of what they need to do in their lives to really feel full, healthy, and well. And so I'm just excited that we're able to partner. We utilize the food bank for our residents and for our cafe. And so we already have a great partnership, but this even extends it further. We're also going to be partnering with Catholic Community Services. We have a contract through the end of this year to provide a nighttime shelter at our Auburn Clinic. So they can go from the Ray of Hope, and then they can get services at Auburn Clinic as well as stay the evening for the nighttime shelter. And hopefully, we'll be able to transition them into permanent housing from there. We'll be able to get them with navigators that are going to be able to help them to enroll in CEA, get the VI SPAD Act done, maybe even on-site at the shelter, and then get them transitioned into housing if that's what they would like.
Orion has been down. They spent a good hour with Valerie and are working on an interview process where they can come over to... Orion will come down to our center, give some interviews, talk to them about getting jobs with Orion. As you know, Orion takes a lot of felonies, a lot of barriers that weigh from them so that they can get jobs and get them back into the workplace. And so having them walk through the door and saying, "Hey, we're here to help," as well as work sources that was right across the street show up, it's been really amazing to watch. I always say this anyways, Auburn steps up when it needs to. But sorry, I don't know what that was for. But, you know, this was... I think this is... And no offense to my friends back here. The homeless community doesn't get looked at very popularly or positively either. And they know it, and we all know it. And so when something like this comes open, and we're trying something really sort of big and out of the box here for Auburn, maybe, and then people just start stepping up. I mean, I've had... I can't tell you the emails from people. I get emails anyways who say, you know, "Let me come help at the food bank, or let me help at the dinners," or whatever. But these have been different people calling in and saying, "Let me come help at the homeless shelter. Let me come see what we can do." So it's been really, really exciting to see that. And we all know that it can't happen if we're not all in this together, so thank you.
Debbie, about how many homeless people have come through there and signed up?
We had 28 in today. We've probably had about 54 that have actually signed in on applications.
And you said you're going to be having overnight stay. Is this men and women, or is this going to be separated to...
It'll be men and women.
And how are you going to separate that?
So Catholic Community Services is running it. There are three basic rooms for that. When we opened up the emergency shelter, we didn't make a man's room and a woman's room. Well, because it was one room. But I didn't get the impression from Catholic Community Services that there would be a separation. Because there's three, you could easily do that. If you are a woman on the street right now, and you have someone who's with you, they're usually your protector, your boyfriend, your protector. And so for us to separate that is very scary for them. So we chose not to do that in the emergency shelter. We could have done some of that and said, "No, we're only going to serve the men because there's more," or whatever. But I never, ever had a problem with having... So we were always on cots, and everybody got their own cot. But we would let the husband and wife, or the man, boyfriend and girlfriend, move their cot so it was together. There was never anything that I had to worry about.
The reason why I asked is because I've gone to help in federal way, and they have, you know, different churches that take care of all men and then the women. And I never heard anything about the families. And so that's why I'm asking, how are you going to decide who's going to stay there in the area that you're going to house them?
I would hope that we'd be able to keep men and women together as far as partnerships and families. I think that any partnerships and any families, if they're two individuals who are homeless and on the streets together, they are their family. And if they'd like to come in and have cots near each other, I don't think that that's inappropriate. I think that if there's an issue, or we have someone who has some DV or PTSD issues and would like to have a separate room, then we can look at that and address it as the need arises. And if we find that we need to have a separate area just for women, we can do so. But I hope that we can serve both right now and see how that goes. I know Catholic Community Services does a great job with their night shelters. And I'm really looking forward to letting them take the charge and waiting to see how they feel we should continue it.
Councilmember Wagner.
I read somewhere where your capacity's 35. Can you tell me how you determine that? Is it 35 beds, 35 seats?
So in the night shelter or the day?
I don't remember which was, but I just saw the word about Ray of Hope having a capacity of 35.
So I did see that on the piece of paper that Josh brought down to us, what occupancy paper, it did say 35 for Ray of Hope. Surprisingly, that that seems like a really low number because these are large... There's four large mobile units put together. And so I can't imagine 35 was the right number. But I'm not arguing with you. So if that were being a problem on the day side of it, what we had talked to federal way about when they opened theirs is people stood in line outside and then came in if somebody left for the daytime. For the night, those rooms... Well, when we were opening up the emergency shelter, we had 35 cots. And so we were able to have... And they were tight, so we got 35 people in. Occasionally, we could get a little more than that if there were children who were also sleeping. And then when the really cold weather happened, we had 61 at some point. Several people gave up their beds and went on the floors underneath the cots and laid that way on blankets. And so, yes, there's a building code, but in the middle of an emergency, I'm understanding we can close our eyes once in a while to that. So... But here at the Valley Cities, originally, we talked about that being a 35-bed room, three of the rooms. So I would guess that that's the way we're going to look at it. And then it's first come, first served. It's just the way it goes. We did, when we were at the emergency shelter, if they had their own car and we were full, we asked if they would go out and sleep in their car. And several of them would always do that. So we'd give them a blanket and let them go out in the car. And Ken has said that that's a secure area back behind the building because it's on their back northwest, northeast corner of the building.
And we've increased to even add security if necessary just so people felt safer if they wanted to do that.
Councilmember DeCorsi.
So you mentioned the driver's license requirement. So if somebody has not obtained or do not have the ability to obtain a driver's license, can they get a state-issue ID in lieu of that?
Well, it doesn't replace the fact that they can drive, but an ID does do the same thing for them that a driver's license.
Yeah, that's my point, is they don't necessarily have to drive, but they can have an ID that will give them the same benefits.
However, many folks come in and are homeless without IDs. And so that driver's license and ID, to me, are connected as the same type of identification.
Councilmember Trout, manual.
So Debbie, once they're in there, do they stay in there? Or are they allowed to come in and out?
The daytime?
Evening.
Evening. So I don't know what Catholic Community Services is going to do. We... And running... So my experience in running the emergency shelter was we would let them go out. So one particular guy I can think of had PTSD. So he would come in. The room would get full. He'd start to get anxious. We always tried to make sure that his bed was near a door so he felt like he had air and a little more comfortable with if he felt like he had to get out, he could get out. We always let people go out. We didn't really lock the doors until this last year. So I ran into six years. And this last year, we finally started saying, "If you're going to go out in the middle of the night, we lock the doors." I think we did it at 11:00, and we unlocked at 6:00. So if you were going to cause a problem, and had been, then by locking the door, that allowed us to stop that problem. But up to that point, we had never had any issues with it. My understanding from Catholic Community Services and how they've been running in Kent is they did lock the doors. But she also was telling me that most of their rules were derived because of what the churches were requiring. And so with here, the conversation was going to be with, "What did we feel was necessary?" And in Ken and my conversation in the beginning, we wanted it to be low-barrier situations. And then as problems happened, you make rules.
Okay. The reason why I ask is because the one that I went to work at, they did lock it. And they had people come in with some drugs. And so they had to ask the young individual that came in with it because the other guys are the ones that snitched on him. But that's the reason why they said they closed it because once they come in, they couldn't have alcohol or drugs or anything like that. And they closed it down at 10:00. They opened at 6:00.
Yeah, that's been common hours, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the update. We are going to now move into Resolution 5297.
I've been told that the mic's not on during study sessions, so I apologize. So again, for the record, Jenna Leonard with Environmental Services. I'm here to present Resolution 5297, which is in your packet. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read it. But since it involves placing an encumbrance on city-owned property, I wanted to be here in case there were any questions. on city-owned property, I wanted to be here in case there were any questions.
Any questions? Why don't you, for the sake of our TV audience, just kind of give us a review, and so that our audience will know what we have no questions about?
I can do that.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. So Resolution 5297 places or allows mayor to execute a flood protection easement on a portion of the property along White River that was purchased by the city back in August of 2015. Property was purchased for flood protection benefits, and as part of our purchase agreement or funding agreement with King County Flood Control District, this is the last piece of the puzzle to complete out that transaction for funding. City used subregional opportunity funds to support the purchase, and their last requirement is that we allow for flood protection easement to King County for their access to flood protection measures.
Any questions? Jenna, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Item B, Airport Jet A Fuel Proposal.
Okay, so good evening. So a few weeks ago, we were here in front of the council talking about the airport and just doing a general briefing over the airport. Since then, there's been continued conversation with the airport board concerning the jet A fuel and how do we provide jet A fuel at the airport. So a little bit of quick background before we jump into that. So in 2015, we finished the master plan for the airport, which included a potential expansion for the airport as well as expansion of fueling facilities. We also have our planned runway enhancement, so the extension of the runway that will be under construction in 2018. And we currently provide aviation gas, so avgas, at the airport, which is what most general aviation use.
Right, if it's a, excuse me, a reciprocating engine.
Right. And we've had a few requests for jet fuel at the airport, so a lot of those requests have come from Cascade, who services helicopters that actually use jet A fuel. We've had a few others once in a while that are also asking for jet A fuel at the airport, but it has not been, the majority of the tenants do not currently use jet A fuel. So we also have in our current capital facilities plan, we have the installation of a permanent jet A fuel facility after the completion of the runway enhancement, so after 2019 time period. In talking with the board about jet A fuel, things that we ask them to consider is the competitive landscape for providing jet A fuel, the cost for the pilot program to get jet A fuel to the airport, so in a temporary capacity until at some point in the future when we can build a permanent jet A fueling facility, and then the sustainability of that jet A fueling program, both short-term and long-term. So in doing that, we've had quite a few conversations with the airport board over the last nine months, going through different options for how to potentially bring a temporary situation to the airport to provide jet A fuel. So the two primary things that we narrowed it down to for them to consider was what we called a public-private partnership. So this is where the airport would actually participate in the costs and the financing of it, along with AMG. The downsides of that was that there was an estimated loss in revenue to the airport for starting that service because of the cost for putting the jet A fuel there. We had capital costs for truck and for containment situations there as well, and then the airport also assumes some of the risks and the additional costs for providing and implementing that. A second option that we went through with the board was what we called a private partnership, and this is actually with both Cascade and AMG taking the lead on providing temporary jet A fueling facilities at the airport through basically a truck on site. There's no impact on the airport budget for that option. It provides current customers for both Cascade and the few customers that the airport would potentially see until the runway enhancement is completed, to provide that with some minimal investment. And it allows us to be responsive to the increasing demands for jet A fuel as we continue to see the clientele grow and when the airport runway enhancement is completed.
Councilmember Pelosi.
How was that $17,760 determined?
That was based on leasing a fuel truck from Eastern Aviation versus going out and buying, having the city buy one, have the containment installed for the truck. The, that's the net based on what we anticipated the fuel flowage would be, based on about a dollar a gallon gross profit. That would be, the lease rate would, the amount of volume we would be pumping in the first year would not cover the cost of the lease and the containment.
Is it safe to have a truck on site that has fuel in it waiting for being pumped into an airplane?
Yes, it's a normal operation. You see those, if you go to Sea-Tac, you see the trucks come up, fuel at most general aviation airports. Sea-Tac also delivers from the ground, pumped into the airplane, so a lot of times at Sea-Tac, you won't see a fuel truck actually come up to the airplane. But at most general aviation airports or outside of certain areas on an airport, they will be delivered by truck, and it'll either be overwing or underwing depending on the size and capability of the aircraft. So it's not abnormal. There's probably 15 trucks at Boeing or at Boeing Field, there's two or three trucks up at Renton. It's not abnormal, whether it be avgas or jet fuel.
Councilmember.
Wait, if I can add, so the main concern is really leakage from that truck and how we address that and what the operating procedures are for addressing any spills that might happen.
Okay. In Grandana, on the first page that you gave is, at the bottom of the first paragraph, it says there's currently one tenant at the airport that has the need to provide this jet fuel to his customers.
And that's Cascade helicopters.
Oh, that's a helicopter?
Cascade helicopters.
Okay, all right.
Who, in the private partnership agreement, they would be one of the parties in that they would be providing a truck to basically service their customers as well as provide AMG the ability to service customers for the general airport when they're needed, which allows us to not have a whole lot of fuel sitting around waiting for potential customers to come.
And how many of them do they service?
I'm going to say they probably service 30, not based helicopters or aircraft, but 30 of their customers come in for different maintenance items, and they will usually come in with minimum fuel onboard due to maintenance, but then when they want to leave, they want to have the fuel available for them so that they could put on 150, 200 gallons to make it back to their location or continue wherever their location would be.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I'm still hung up on the $18,000. I really don't believe that. I believe if we market it right, with the other, get it out in our media and market that, we should at least break even. I mean, John, you, you're a pilot.
I don't buy that stuff.
No, I know, you buy, you buy what we sell out there, and we make a profit on the fuel. But I just think that that's a low-ball number. That's my opinion.
But there would be nothing to keep us from taking the conservative approach, starting with the private partnership and see what the trade bears, and then as the market builds up, step into the other platform.
Exactly.
Correct. So in your packet, you have the actual proposal that was provided to the board as a separate attachment on there, which walks through kind of the three, the two phases to the private proposal. And part of what would come out of that is an operating agreement between the airport and the private partnership for how they're actually providing jet A fuel in this interim situation, and at what point does it become a situation where the city and the airport takes over that service of the jet A fuel. So there's an end date to it planned in there, and that's kind of what I had on the next slide, was kind of the things to consider in an operating agreement. We have the insurance and the liability for running fueling facilities from there. We have the containment and the spill response requirements. We have to address flowage fees on the airport, so whether we're going to charge for whatever gas they're flowing. Defining what the operator can and can't do on the airport, who they can serve, defining how the general airport customers, how that service happens with AMG, as well as identifying kind of what is that next level when we go to permanent jet A fueling facilities where the airport takes that over and how we work out of that private plan into the public situation. So in going through that conversation with the airport board, the airport board felt very strongly that they did not want to put the airport budget at risk of losing any funds, so they went forward and their recommendation was to move forward with the private partnership proposal, as was included in your packet.
And so the private partnership would be through 2018?
It would be probably through 2019, I would assume, so you're probably looking at phase one would be something that we would hope to have in place as soon as possible, but by the first quarter of next year at the latest, as we work through the containment and the spill response requirements. And then phase two would happen as the increased need continues to grow, and you're going to see a significant change in that when the airport runway is actually lengthened and you see more chance for these larger planes that use the jet A fuel to actually come to the airport. There's some limitation right now with the length of our runway for a lot of the customers that could actually come there. What it allows us to do over this two-year period, though, is put, have it known that we do have jet A fuel at the Auburn Airport, whether it's the airport providing it or being provided through the private partnership, we are getting known for having jet A fuel, which is a positive, so that when that airport runway enhancement is done, we're in a better position for basically then moving into a more permanent situation.
Councilmember Holman.
What's Cascade do for their jet A now?
They have a truck that they bring in with 55 gallons, and they will pump one or two of the barrels into the helicopters so that they can at least leave.
Their tank.
Exactly. Yeah, because it's under the requirements for DOE, it's under the requirements of the rules and regulations, by 55 gallons or below as far as certain containment and fire.
With the extra feet on the runway, we'll need to be advertising that we have jet A available, and with the addition of more light aviation burning, turbine fuel burning aircraft coming online every year, so at some point, the two are going to.
Exactly. Agas in the general scheme of all petroleum is, when you talk to the oil companies, they feel it's a public service to provide aviation fuel because it's highly refined, there's a lot of requirements for the cleanliness, like for example, there's 66 delivery points in Western Washington. There's one truck in Western Washington that can deliver avgas, because nobody wants to invest in dedicating a truck, a driver, because you can't mix avgas with any other product. With diesel, home heating oil, jet A, you don't have to clean the tanker. You can put home heating oil, 10,000 gallons in that truck, send it off, okay? You can then turn around, pick up jet fuel in that same truck without cleaning it and send it off. So for example, our cost of delivery for 8,000 gallons is $475 per 8,000 gallons, well, one gallon or 10,000 gallons, it's $475, okay? By the time we, you know, multiply it out by 8,000, we have our cost of delivery, okay? So sometimes we're, you know, we order a week in advance to get avgas, and we may or may not get it when we ask for it, just because of delivery and traffic.
Councilmember Holman.
Just what's your general feel? How many of the aircraft based at Auburn have certification to run MoGas?
I'm going to say less than 10. It was popular 10, 12 years ago because there was no replacement for 80 octane lower than most of the airplanes. After they've reached their first TBO running auto gas, they found out that their maintenance overhaul requirements were substantially more because of the avgas additives, that you don't know what's in the additive. If you get Shell, you get one thing, you get Chevron, you get another additive, and it's not, those aircraft engines are not meant for that type of situation. There are STCs or supplemental type certificates that allow them to do it, but the gaskets and the seals and the components inside the engine, you talk to an engine repair shop, they love aircraft that run auto gas. They see them a lot sooner and they have a lot higher repairs.
Councilmember Wagner.
As I'm looking at the private emergency proposal page, I know you can't speak for Cascade, but are they interested in phase one and are they comfortable with potential phase two, or they share things with you?
Yes. The main thing is they want to take care of their customers, okay? And to help the airport, they would be willing to make their truck and facility available for us to pump retail as visitors or if any based aircraft. The situation that we will have with the jet fuel is we're going to see visiting aircraft first that are going to require jet fuel. Based aircraft at that level, for example, we have Freightliner that has a newer Kingair that they've just purchased, and they've been visiting quite often, that takes jet fuel. They won't base here because there's no jet fuel and there's no hangar for them, okay? So once we get the jet fuel, the owners of the aircraft, the companies will take a look and say, okay, task one is done, we'll come in and we'll build a hangar to base our airplane, you know? Otherwise, Freightliner happens to be based at Tacoma, we have a little spot so that they can pull in, it's a larger aircraft. We set aside a spot so when they come in, they can load their passengers, unload their passengers, and not interrupt the other general aviation activities.
So if we were to say that we, pardon? If we were to say that we were interested in looking at this kind of an agreement, would in the agreement, would there be the option to stay at phase one for more than one or two years?
I would say yes. Once the, the number I used was 40,000 gallons of volume a year. On jet fuel, that's not a lot of volume, but I think that's the point that will be the tipping point, so to speak, to say, now we need to have facilities because we've hit that 40,000, there is a demand, we will get the aircraft, we will get those visiting aircraft, we can promote to get based aircraft, that changes somewhat the complexion of our based aircraft and visiting aircraft.
Councilmember Drop Manuel.
She asked the question I was going to ask, but also, say we do it, where are you going to build the other building for?
So for the, for phase one and phase two, there's no building, so this is all based on truck service at the airport. When we get to the permanent jet A fuel, it's, it would be an above-ground tank, so it's not necessarily going to have to be its own building. What's going to come into play there is whether or not we have to have a cover over it to meet containment spill and fire requirements. So that's part of that long-term planning. And the other thing that I would point out to the council is that the capital outlay for the airport runway enhancement is fairly significant on the airport budget itself. So putting the temporary system in place so that we can get the airport out there as being able to provide jet A fuel, and putting the more long-term investment into a future year is definitely better for the overall airport budget. You guys are going to think I'm a broken record on this, but I have to remind you that we're also doing that facility assessment right now, which is going to tell us a lot about what is the age of our facilities out there and what kind of long-term capital outlay do we need to look at for that as well. So I think it's better to have that permanent discussion about that permanent jet A fuel when we have that information as well as the runway is done and we kind of see how much demand do we really have, so we make sure that we're doing the right investment with the airport funds.
Bob or Claude, any questions before we turn it over to Councilmember Holman?
I have none. I think that it's been very well explained here about what the process has evolved, and I think as Angrid said, when we get the results of that study, then we'll know more as time goes on.
When are we going to get the results of that study?
So we are currently hiring the consultant right now to do that, and our hope is that we'll have a final product in the first quarter of next year.
Claude, anything before we turn it over to John? John? Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, the important thing is being able to list jet A in the airport. Yeah, the important thing is being able to list jet A in the airport facilities guide so that we've got that hook out there. Now, just from my own curiosity, what's jet A selling for?
Today, well, if I were to buy gas today, and of course it's very volatile, it changes every Tuesday, to gross a dollar a gallon, we would be at $3.50 a gallon, including sales tax. So it's 50, well, dollar or, so yeah, we're a dollar fifty cents less. The other thing is when you look at a general aviation filling, okay, the average fill that we get at the gas pumps today is 17 gallons. When a corporate aircraft comes in, the minimum fill is going to be 150 gallons, okay? So there's going to be, I really don't believe, I think the 40,000 tells us we have an under-satisfied market and now we need to move in because 40 is going to jump to 80, 80 is going to jump to probably 150 to 200,000. Because we're, you know, we're a significant airport in the Puget Sound region, okay? Boeing is not going to get any larger, there's no more land up there, Renton, it's landlocked just as Auburn is, but we have the opportunity to fit like a niche that I've said before, okay? We're not going to get the $20 million Oprah Winfrey jets, okay? We're going to get the smaller six-to-eight passenger turboprop aircraft, but they fly more. They're usually flying more often. And we'll have also potential developers for facilities at the airport.
Thank you both very much.
So next steps, if I can just wrap up real quick? I'm kind of seeing a consensus generally with going forward with the board's proposed recommendation with the private partnerships. So the next steps would be to work on the operating agreement with the airport and the private partnership, and then that would come back in front of council for action later this year.
Thank you very much. You know, we're going to take a break and then we're going to come back and we're going to do the health and human services portion of our agenda.
A flight physical is 150 bucks.
Oh, 150. Oh, that's not bad.
No.
Well, Holman can afford that.
Yeah.
It's not the problem.
I'm going to get these Claude synchronized charging nets. Okay, John, can we?
Sorry, talking airplanes.
You're having too much fun.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Trap Manuel, who is the lead for our special focus group on human, health and human services.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Dana Edman.
Hello, again. I have a couple of returned visitors and then a couple of folks from King County Assessor's Office. And we were approached, oh, gosh, maybe a month ago, give or take, to set up a meeting with the Assessor's Office in Valley Cities that was sort of, had springboarded off the Ray of Hope Resource Center conversations that had been, we had been having. And this modular project came up, and I will allow Bailey and Ed to kind of explain how it was that the phone call made its way to Auburn and kind of where that initial feasibility about what is essentially a microhousing project that could be a possibility here, so.
Madam Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers, Bailey Stover, I'm the Director of Communications and External Relations for the King County Assessor's Office. And I brought with me Ed Walker, who's our Policy Director and is much smarter than I am. And then, of course, we've got our friends from Valley Cities, who we will be talking about that partnership here in just a moment. So the Assessor's Office, we usually don't get involved in housing and homelessness, but our assessor promised taxpayers that we would use our office as a catalyst and bully pulpit to help move some of these conversations along in King County. So since then, our office has been busy at work thinking about how we frame that conversation and what we could actually do from a county perspective. So we started with, we have the database of all 700,000-plus parcels in King County. And so we started looking at publicly owned land that's either owned by the state, by county, by local administration or jurisdiction. And we looked at parcels that are over 40,000 square feet with, that are vacant or underutilized and within 100 yards of public transportation. We came up with over 200 properties in the city of Seattle and we came up with over 500 properties across King County that we've identified. We believe that if we utilize the properties on the short term, we can inject housing solutions into our communities immediately. And if we use them longer term, we can insert the property in totality back into the housing stock. And there's all sorts of government-owned lands and it always surprises me to look at publicly owned lands that are owned by colleges and universities. There is a ton of property in King County owned by Washington State University, as well as UW and some of our...
Yes.
Yep, go Cougs. And some of our community and technical colleges, as well as government-owned property that was purchased for staging sites or specific projects. One parcel we identified in particular was in fact just that. We found out King County, maybe had forgotten about, but owns a two-acre piece of property down in Seattle on the waterfront on Elliot Avenue, and it's currently being used as a parking lot. It is completely vacant. And so we started working with the City of Seattle to determine its appropriate use, if we could use it appropriately for short-term housing or modular housing. It would allow the county to retain ownership of the site, we'd place temporary housing on the site for our homeless neighbors. At the end of the project, we could surplus the property so the county gains the liquid assets from it and we would move the modular housing on to another site. And those agreements can be anywhere from three years to something more permanent long-term. At this time, at this time, one of the things I wanted to highlight is we can't use enterprise purchase properties for this type of purpose because we have to get market rate for enterprise properties to return those profits back to the taxpayers. But we can use other general government purchase properties for this type of thing.
Can you give us a, I don't know what enterprise properties are.
So, for example, Seattle City Light buys a bunch of properties, but because it's purchased through ratepayers, they can't, they can't give it or lend it to other government under market rate.
Thanks.
So we then also decided that we would like to, if we found properties that work, partner with nonprofits to do wraparound services and provide services at these sites. So one of these projects, which I've included in the packets that I passed out towards the back, is already underway. It's a pilot in Seattle and it's utilizing modular housing of private vendor and nonprofit-owned land. And it's a Seattle Times editorial that you'll see in the back that kind of highlights the project and talks a little bit more about it. It's in Columbia City in Seattle. So we've identified a developer called Blockable. It's founded by a former Amazon executive who saw the homelessness problem growing and wanted to help address it. Blockable builds modular housing units, actually right here in the state of Washington down in Vancouver. They look roughly the size of a shipping container, but they certainly don't look or feel like a shipping container. And they have, it's a modern look and feel, they have a couch and bed, desk, kitchenette, and they actually have a bathroom that is much larger than the bathroom in my master bath in my new home in Auburn, I might add. And so we actually took this concept to the legislature and secured a $3 million line item in the House and Senate capital budgets, if we ever get a capital budget from our state legislature. We've got some money in it for it. And when discussing where to locate a pilot project for our office to work on, we talked about Seattle, we talked about north of Seattle, we talked about the east side, and I had a crazy idea and said we should probably talk to Auburn. And the reason being is I've heard the mayor and deputy mayor talk about homelessness in this community, as well as the council. You all have made some pretty significant investments in economic development and our community. And you've been talking about mental health and drug issues and homelessness and the root causes of homelessness. And so I thought for a pilot project, we should approach the city of Auburn. And I had to convince my Seattle friends, that I'll live up north, Mr. Walker, that Auburn was a good place to start, but we got there. So we contacted the mayor's office and we pitched the idea and she invited us to have a conversation with some stakeholders in Auburn. And so we got to meet with Valley Cities, as well as the mayor and the mayor's office. And we actually looked at a piece of property that Valley City owns, right next to their Phoenix Rising facility. And I will note that we stood and looked at this piece of property during one of our 98-degree summer days. And Dana and the mayor apparently don't sweat, I was dying. But, so we checked that out. And we believe that we can establish between eight and 13 modular units on this piece of property on the Valley Cities campus. So the mayor asked us to brief the council and I have to say, I apologize in my tardiness between the long holiday weekend and vacations, it's hard to get in here, but we are very happy to be here. So as of today, the feasibility of the site is underway. We have the $3 million commitment from the legislature in both the House and Senate. And we are looking for money for operating costs to pay for it to operate here. The units that we're proposing using are 10 to 20 feet, or excuse me, 10 by 20 feet. They're stackable and they can be combined into any configuration to maximize the space. So as I mentioned, they're portable, they're steel-framed, they're self-contained as far as sleeping and bathroom facilities, they're ADA compliant, and they meet LNI labor and safety regulations. On the second page of the packet I passed you out, the first page talks about the units. The second page talks about what steps would have to be taken in order to move the project forward. So Valley Cities and their architect did a tour of Blockables very recently. We'd like to arrange for a tour for the city's team and the county's team to go down to Vancouver and check out the product. And as I just noted, we will not let the mayor pick the playlist on the way down for music choices. But we'll arrange a tour. We need to determine whether we want eight units or 13 units. There is a conversation around a potential zoning change that would be needed in the event we want to go up to 13 units, but right now, we can comfortably get eight on that site. The architect will put together materials for a pre-op meeting, target date for this meeting is yet to be set. The developers team is working with Valley Cities Architect to develop the site layout with costing for the current zoning at eight units and if we made the zoning modification, 13 units. And Valley Cities will gather quotes to do site work and installation, which would allow for our budgeting purposes to move forward. And then the county and city would need to advocate for additional funding in excess of the $3 million for operating from some of our partners. And we've got plenty of ideas as to where we can advocate for that money. And then the city would assist in streamlining of permits, zoning changes and other approvals. And if we pulled the trigger on this, it could be open as soon as May of 2018 and help remove some of our neighbors off of the streets and into housing. And I'm sure there's tons of questions, but I don't know.
Councilmember Wagner. Oh, I think this is under... Oh, yeah. Excuse me. Councilmember Trap Manuel.
No, that, just, your questions, that he covered everything.
Councilmember Wagner.
Well, my question has to do with the economic, or the financial feasibility. You know, I worked for R.R. I was ready, we looked at all kinds of things like these 200-square-foot things and they're always pretty expensive. And when I divide 3 million by eight houses, that's 400,000 bucks. Is that really what each of these costs?
So, so I'd say two things. First of all, when we went to our partners at the county and said, "What is it going to cost us for affordable housing and where are the sites?", they came up with two sites. One of them was so deep into Petrovitzky, you're never going to see public transit again, and the other one was like shoreline or somewhere. And the other thing they said is affordable housing, they put $350,000 price tag per door on affordable housing. And so this model is actually significantly cheaper, the units range in price.
Yeah, it, the short answer to your question is no, it's not going to be $400,000 a door. We happened to obtain $3 million from the state and that can be spread around other sites. It was the most we thought we could get for a pilot program and we were very appreciative to get that money. It's more than what we would need. It's more than what we would need for this site. We're talking more for this site for eight to 13 units, probably closer to the range of 70 to $100,000 a door. And that's the big advantage we want, we want to test in a, in a reasonably-sized pilot is to, what is it actually, a lot of it does depend upon the configuration and the, and how you structure the services and the community itself. That's why we're not starting off with 200 units. Because if we're off by even a small factor, it would blow the budget. So, we have enough capital here to comfortably build a smaller pilot site, not be cutting back if we find things are a little bit more expensive capital-wise, as well as operating. But we don't have firm numbers on those, but we have enough in capital to do a reasonably-sized pilot like this and do it right. And learn the lessons about what it actually does cost per unit.
Has the company Blockable already done some of these units?
So, they're working on the pilot project right now in Columbia City. And they've got a full distribution and manufacturing facility set up down in Vancouver. I don't know if you could.
I was down there on Friday and I couldn't even, what they're doing was really cool. When we went into the unit, just looking at this picture, it does, just, just does not do it justice. I've done micro units in Seattle when I worked for another organization and they weren't very square. And so, micro units that are square make you feel very closed in. These are long. And the units that we're talking about, we were able to do this project, would be 100 square feet, up to 100 square feet larger than what we were able to walk through on Friday, which was a demo piece that they had in Seattle at one time, so there's some publicity around that as well. When we went into it, just looking down, down the corridor of it, it felt so much larger to me. And so, one of the challenges that I found for a lot of people who are homeless is when they get taken from the street into housing and they're in a box, they feel like they are in a box and the walls are closing in and they go back out on the streets or into the encampments, or they take their sleeping bag and go into a grassy area and sleep for a couple of minutes and then they come back and try it again. This actually takes that feeling away and I was really shocked. So, that was one, like, super large excitement. After touring and talking with them, some of the innovations that they have is really trying to make this indestructible, which is great because what, I serve young adults at Phoenix Rising. Okay? And so, maybe it could be a step up for some of the folks that are transitioning from needing super subsidized housing or super supportive housing into just less supportive. They still would have an infrastructure there and it could help individuals who are chronically homeless get off the streets and be indestructible. Just makes it so much easier because it's going to last so much longer. The bathroom is huge. Oh, my goodness. I just looked at this bathroom, I couldn't believe it compared to any bathroom that I've seen in any studio, SRO, micro unit. It was completely amazing. And their team was so cool. And I know I'm probably sounding really a big geek right now, but I've never been able to meet engineers and construction workers and architects that were on a team that came and told me, "We're designing this exactly for what you do and also for the mass public." And their dream is that they're going to have a desirable product that's beautiful and it is. It's really pretty. The colors that you can choose from, the item structure, the fixtures are very modern-looking, the lighting is beautiful, it comes out from a plank so that it's not that direct bright light like you get, but, you know, even, these lights are very bright, which you sometimes have in apartments. It's just very soft and, and it's just, they're trying so hard to make this like top-notch for everybody, knowing who, that we're going to be serving folks who have been chronically homeless.
What, what piece of land are we talking about? Is this where the double white mobile homes are at right now?
Yeah, it's behind, so they got Phoenix Rising and then you have our parking lot for Phoenix Rising. It's that plot of land behind that we planned on making Building C for Phoenix Rising. And so, it would be in addition to that site, which right now is wasted. And we're working excavating just to get some of the, you know, grass and overgrown stuff down right now.
The reason why I'm asking, because I, I recall the director, is it Keith?
Ken.
Ken, mentioning that the double white mobile home was just a temporary thing because he wanted that piece of land for building apartments.
That is true.
And so, that's why I was wondering if this was the piece of land that you're talking about putting these on.
I'd just quickly mention that the units also, the configuration can be changed of them, so they can actually do two-bedroom units with these and have families. And the other thing I would mention is the shelf life on one of these units, now that it's been tested, is 150 years. So, we can move them to other sites as well.
Okay, Mayor, before I get to you, okay.
So, Bailey, can you just say whether these are transitional housing or more permanent supportive housing in nature?
I'm going to defer to the expert.
I think it depends on what we decide. It can be permanent supportive housing, it can be permanent housing, it can be transitional, it can be a pet program, it can be a housing voucher program for people in the vision points, depending on what we decide is the best need. I would direct that populations from each group support a group that would be a mentorship to folks that are at Phoenix Rising and blend with the community there as well as possible because they will be able to access a cafe, a community area, laundry facilities there. They'll be able to access supportive services on-site, a computer lab. And so, we do have some infrastructure that, there to support individuals that could move into this site as well.
Mr. DeCoursey and then Bob.
First, I need to give you a little bit of my background and two or three statements to make, and specifically for you related to what you're talking about, about excess government land. I spent half of my working career in the module industry. A company I worked for in California, we were the pioneers in developing this product, which is a steel-stud rigid frame non-commosible product. And I met with the Blockable principles, I admire for what they've done because it's been a long time since somebody else has duplicated this and we did the product 35 years ago. So, it's been a long time coming. With that, a question before I go into my statement here is, have you looked at other products besides Blockable? Because their cost per square foot is, because of the type of structure they build and because it's 150 years in the life cycle, is pretty expensive. And if we're looking at this as a temporary transitional housing development, I'm just curious as if you have explored other opportunities for other module manufacturers providing similar product that may not be the rigid frame steel-stud product.
So, I'd say we've looked at two other concepts. The first one is the tiny house concept, which I will say is typically not more than a storage shed.
Right, I agree.
And doesn't have the amenities of it. And what, the biggest concern there was, was the mobility. Moving them site-to-site on wood structures doesn't last very long. And then, the other product we looked at was from a company called OneBuild, who builds a very similar product, but ships them over from China. And they come so plug-and-play that even the toilet paper is included in the purchase and they're loaded and ready to go. But I will say, it excited our legislative partners in Olympia to be able to support a Vancouver-based company in concept, rather than importing them in from China. And I think there was also some cost issues with them.
There was. The other, the third thing I would add to that is that we're also looking at a new product produced in Washington called cross-laminated timber. And that could be incorporated actually into this pilot or the next one. And so, that's another homegrown, literally, Washington product that we want to hopefully use these funds for, provided by the legislature, to see how it really incorporates into a community. And we asked Blockable about CLT, whether that could be compatible, you know, versus the steel frame. And they said, "Yes, yeah, we can, we can fabricate, or at least a portion of the buildings on the site might be CLT and might, some might be steel frame." So, there's room for making this community work for the specific site and to do it with Washington homegrown products.
And Councilmember, I would just quickly add, the cost per unit that we're talking about, they come fully finished, fully assembled, beautiful product. There is an option to lower the cost and have them not come fully assembled, which I see as an opportunity if we make it through this pilot project, to partner with some of our labor unions and apprenticeship utilization and really have a city-private partnership or public-private partnership to put some people in our community to work building these products, housing other people in our community.
One of the things that they showed us was that they're working on ways to make it more panels that pop in and taking out some of the harder construction for folks. And so, this could actually be an opportunity to the people who are employed not to be learning new skill and something that I think in the future is going to be really big. The other piece to it is, these are transitional units as well. You can move them. Where if we decided that this transitional pilot project needed to end and we wanted to move these to another site, you can do that, you can stack on top of them. Just because we put eight or 13 down doesn't mean in a year we can't build up. It gives us all those opportunities to do stuff.
I fully agree. On the side build, we have stacked these as high as eight stories, so I fully agree. The other piece of this is, and first of all, I am agreeing with you 100% to bring a product in here from China, that's a modular product compared to buying homegrown. There's no question it needs to be homegrown. The other piece is, I wanted to share is, when you mentioned good use of government land, I'm really pleased to hear that because I serve on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And one of our major policy processes, going to the governor, which has already been submitted to his desk, is looking at the utilization of the excess government land for affordable housing. So, I'd like to spend some more time with you on that. And perhaps, you know, you can join us in one of our Ahab meetings and bring some more of that concept in because I know you know a lot of the people there, but it's something we need to work on really hard to make that happen sooner than later.
We'd love to join you. And I would just note that the assessor and Ed just had a great meeting with the Speaker of the House, who is likely to have a bill introduced this coming session, not only addressing government land that is surplus being used, but specifically addressing enterprise-funded government land. We have a perfect site identified right now in Capitol Hill in Seattle that's owned by Seattle City Light and they want over $100,000 a year for rent. And it's not because they, they want the money, it's because they have to ask for the money in order to return it to the ratepayers. So, we're looking at being creative with that and not depriving the ratepayers of their money, but looking at community benefit as, as currencies, so to speak.
Councilmember Wagner.
First of all, I want to say that I'm really supportive of the Assessor's Office looking for places and partners who would accommodate the zoning laws to do that. However, I'm still stuck up on the economics, having worked this several times in my career. If you've been $70,000 for one of these Blockables, you can buy a very nice movable trailer house for half that. So, what, what is the thought process that says, "Why don't we go buy trailer houses instead of taking on a new technology like this"?
Well, this is movable. Mobile homes, manufactured homes don't typically move and transport as well. They, they're typically designed to be put in place, they're wood frame and not always the highest quality wood frame because they're not intended to be moved on, or let alone stacked. So, what, and they also don't always conform to building codes. What we're zeroing in on is making these conform to any jurisdictions' building codes for permanent housing. And that's, so that's one thing, it's durable, it's movable, it's, it's configurable, up, down, sideways, in, in any number of ways. That comes at a cost. That's not as cheap as, as a typical manufactured home, but we're thinking of durability and also to be able to transport them by rail, by truck, and, and to have a product that's, that's standardized too and that could potentially be exported around the country to other communities that have, have the same crisis that we have here, so.
I'd also mention, one of the main factors for us in this product is destructibility. So, with a mobile home or modular home, there's, there's an element that if it is destroyed or damaged by a tenant, it's going to take significantly more time and significantly more money to repair. This product is frankly damn near indestructible. And so, when they have tenants move out, there's actually floor plugs where you can literally take a pressure washer and pressure wash this product because it's steel frame. And so, the destructibility is a huge piece. And when we've talked with nonprofit partners at Compass Housing and other organizations like that, they tell us that they have tenants that will trash the place upon moving out. And it takes $40,000 to $60,000 to repair the place, but more importantly, it takes weeks or months before they can get that unit back into the housing stock to get somebody else moved in. And so, one of the things that really impressed me about this is, it is literally, you can remove the furniture out of this thing, spray it down, and it's ready back to go instantly.
And that's a perfect segue too. I just asked Loriann to speak to as we were talking about a project like this. One thing that a lot of nonprofits do is what's called scattered site housing. And I've just.
So, in scattered site housing, which was how housing first really got originated, especially here in Washington State, is we would mass release up units in different properties and have outreach teams go and serve folks who were homeless, chronically homeless, with an outreach team. And it was a housing-first approach with supportive services. And so, they would move them into these scattered sites, but then that means the outreach team that is based in Seattle has to go to Kenmore, Federal Way, Seattle, all over the place to see their folks because you're just trying to get as many units as you can to support as many residents as you can in these projects. It's expensive, the turnover is expensive, you actually lose money on these units. And so, nonprofits were actually paying more money to do these mass releases and turn these units because it wasn't in their property. And every time you turned a unit, there was no additional funds to pay for the maintenance because you only got rent reimbursement. So, by doing a project like this, we're able to keep them together. These type of units, you can either have them right next to each other with a little space in between, or we can actually wrap them. So, we could have all of these laid out and you can wrap them. So, like, one of these pictures is actually being able to wrap it and this. So, we can do the same thing, we can make it look like one, but it would easily be able to be moved. And we can make it three separate, we can move them to a more appropriate placement if we thought that that was a better opportunity. And I just think this gives us a lot more flexibility to keep people in communities and to keep them together than how we've historically tried to solve some of these issues with scattered site, with just taking one floor of an apartment and trying to rent that. These are separate entrances and it just really provides people more with a sense of home, so.
How are you letting the people in that neighborhood know that you're thinking about doing this? Because on National Night Out, that was some of the concerns about the homeless living close to the school and living in that neighborhood. So, have you approached that neighborhood to let them know you're looking into doing something like this? Or is this going to be after you decide that it's going to be done?
So, the school is already aware that we're wanting to develop both properties, Valley City Landing where the Ray of Hope is, which will be next to that landing later on, and then the Phoenix Rising lot. In fact, they're asking us, "What are you going to do with that lot soon?". So, there has been conversation on that. When we had the Ray of Hope opening, we did have a barbecue where we did invite the school and the teachers and, and so, we had a lot of conversations with folks about what we're planning on that land. And everyone was really supportive of what we're currently doing. We would continue to have meetings with the community and involve the community. That's very important that everyone involved is in agreement that we should expand those services.
The county would also do extensive outreach, but for us, it was important to sit down with council first and have a conversation before knocking on doors, but we will be as well.
Okay, Councilmember DeCoursey, Councilmember Wagner and Councilmember Pelosi.
I think first, to, first, to Councilmember Wagner, I kind of addressed some of your concerns with, I believe putting in a modular project like this, whether it be the steel-stud rigid frame or the engineered wood, you know, whatever, even if Blockable is amenable to changing their manufacturing process to lessen the cost but not lessen the quality, I think that's a much better product than if we put in a double white. For a lot of reasons you've already heard. And for the opportunity for these units to be reused over and over and over again, I think that's very positive. However, looking at the product, project itself, I've got to say I'm a little selfish and stingy. I want to see the $3 million in Auburn, I don't want to do anyplace else.
All right.
And for me to make that statement, what I would recommend we look at during the feasibility is going multi-story, albeit this could be transitional housing, but make it more permanent in that sense. And look at this site of having the opportunity of serving more than 13 households. It's a good start, but we all know there's, you know, hundreds of households and thousands of households.
Zoning issues.
Pardon?
Zoning issues.
I understand. But that's the council's responsibility to look at zoning as well. I think we need to look at that.
Well, yes, it would be a comp plan.
Mm-hmm. I understand. Mm-hmm, I understand.
For next year.
Okay, I, yeah, for next year, I get that. You know, there's things I think we should be doing as a council, albeit maybe not for this particular project, I'll give it, things we should be doing as a council, look at our zoning laws, to accommodate projects like this, because the affordable housing crisis is not going to go away. And the affordable housing crisis for a population of this income level, which always stays at zero to 30, okay, is not going to go away. And we're not going to meet the demand for housing unless we move ourselves into a product configuration, whether it be blockable or some other project outside of the ones imported from China, that can give us what we need to do to build the communities up for what we need to have. But I'll just go back to my original statement, is I want all 3 million of this to go to Auburn, and I think we can figure out, whether without a comp plan, I think we can figure out how to make it happen.
As a council, as a council.
Oh, yeah, this is for council.
And Councilmember, I would say, as a selfish Auburn resident myself, I want all 3 million spent in Auburn, plus another 3 million, another 3 million, another 3 million. You know, when we looked at the Seattle site of two acres, we had an architect look at that, and they painted us a picture of 200 to 250 units we could put on that site, with everything from a dog run to a community kitchen, laundry facilities, all sorts of things. So I think where there's a will, there's a way. And as I said, our office has a database of 700,000 properties, and there's a few in Auburn that look interesting, so we should continue the conversation.
Bailey, you did a good explanation of why trailer houses are not the best choice. I think you should emphasize that to people when they talk, because anybody who's thought through this process, as I have many times, you come back to saying, okay, is it first cost or is it long-term cost that you're interested in? And in first cost, trailer houses are a lot cheaper. At long-term cost, you save a lot of money with what you've got. Plus, the other thing is, you're serving a pretty different demographic than most people have thought about. And in that you're doing that, it's not quite satisfying, the urge I have to figure out affordable housing in general on really tiny spaces and tiny lots, which I think we need to do in some kind of a prototype way in this city, and this might be the best way to do it, is do some work on the homeless problem while figuring out the high-density, lower-cost problem that we have for a lot of people who aren't homeless, they just don't have the money.
Exactly.
Can I just add just a couple of things, Councilmember Decorse, and also to your comment, Councilmember Job Manuel, on, you know, looking down the road a little bit. So, you know, originally where the Ray of Hope Resource Center is, that Valley Cities was intending to do a microhousing project on, but did not have funding capital campaigns in place. So I think a little, I can't speak for Valley Cities specifically, but I do know that if there is a second project, could it go on that piece of land? Possibly. And then Kevin and his staff, I mean, pretty much since that initial conversation with microhousing and accessory dwelling units and all of those things that we know we need to do in our code to make these projects go, has been in the works, from what I understand, that Jeff Tate and his staff have been working on those, examining all of those codes and zoning and whatever may need to take place in order to get that $3 million to stay here.
Okay, Mr. Pelosi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the $3 million tied to block, blockable?
Is not. It says modular housing project next to it, and we also made sure it wasn't tied to a specific city because we did not want to be locked into Seattle.
Also, I have a question for you, Mr. Snyder. If council wanted to do 13 units, what would we have to do to do that?
Perhaps nothing. Talking with Mr. Tate, we, that site was previously approved, as noted, for other development. Even at 13, it might be less intense, so we might be able to look at some options. Mr. Tate and I were talking about that. If for some reason we couldn't get there, then it might necessitate, I'm just saying my councilmember, looking at some potential modification to zoning codes, which, as you are well aware, usually involves planning commission and ultimately city council policymaking. But I don't know that we're there yet. Jeff and his team are still looking at a potentially creative approach, because again, we are dealing with a previously approved site for development, so we may be able to take advantage of that previous approval and look at it.
But the council could speed that along, correct?
Again, it may not necessitate anything by council because this could be done administratively if we could determine that it's less impactful than, once we have a, I guess for lack of a word, a final proposal, it might be that it'd be less impactful, and that could be done administratively, my level, just making an administrative interpretation. But if there is something unique in the final proposal that necessitates a code change, for example, councilmember, then we may need to come back to planning commission with the council, but we may be able to reach the speed and quickness that some of the councilmembers are expressing, depending on what that final proposal looks like.
Councilmember Wells, and then Councilmember Decorse.
Like Councilmember Decorse, I have a background of working with people with disabilities and disadvantaged people. And what I see here is something that is accessible to people with disabilities, as you explained, the bathroom, which is really a gift. Over the years that I worked for the school district, I was given the responsibility of remodeling West Auburn Senior High, which is our alternative school. And it's always been my impression that people that are disadvantaged or whatever, they need the best facilities, not the worst. And everyone was always concerned that when we moved the West Auburn kids back into that facility, that they would, we made the bathrooms indestructible, and we did all the things that we do at all the regular rest of our schools. And if you go into West Auburn today, it looks like it's brand new. So I think that it's important, I see that we have windows and nice bathrooms. I think that that's really incredible. But I have two concerns. One concern is that if we're going to do it, we need to have more units so that we can experiment with the stackable portion. And the other concern that is not as humorous is that continuing to place services for people that have these disabilities and whatever, though it is nice to have them really close to their service providers, that end of town is really overburdened with need. And I would think that as we look at potential places, that we not immediately roll out, rule out something else that we have, because that's a pretty tough end of town, and sometimes high-needs people need to be spread out a little bit, even at the expense of service. The benefit also is being indestructible, we will not lose precious time in between use. And that is really, really important in this age of where we need space. So in summary, I love it, and I like that they're getting the best, but I'm really concerned about the location.
We're very open to working with council in the city to find whatever you feel is the best location, and I was telling Ed earlier that I could, I'd be more than happy, by the way, to test the product for council. We'll put one on the plaza of City Hall, I'll live in it for 30 days, and you all can watch and wave through the window, it'll be great.
Oh, that would be wonderful. That's absolutely wonderful.
Raise awareness.
Go ahead, do you have another question?
I forgot what it was, but it was great.
And then Rich.
I have to digress a little bit, Bailey, because I have to tell you this.
You want to live with him?
No, I have to tell you this story, I know it's taking time, but when the company I worked for developed this product, we had to develop a non-combustible modular product for the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station in California, actually the SOGS, because as we were going to fire up the nuclear reactors, they were no longer allowed to have wooden office trailers on site, they needed a more permanent structure. So my company, in less than three months, actually, designed, developed, built prototypes, and had the first, industry's first, two-story non-combustible modular product occupied on that site. The destructive testing that was done, and my boss directed me to do this, was for me to sit in one of these small units as a toter, a driver, was hauling it around Long Beach, California, and for every bump, nook, cranny, railroad track, everything you could find, to see if it would hold up.
Video of that somewhere.
And I want to say, because this is a product today, I think I am responsible for it because I survived.
Get those T-shirts now.
I survived.
And with that note, Councilmember, you only lost your hair, is that it?
No, I didn't.
But it made him a better golfer.
Another point real quickly, though, is, in looking at the future, I know there's been discussions on this as well, but if you look online and look at a product, project that was done in Detroit, they wanted it done in Texas, where they call it tiny homes, but they're building 200 to 400 square foot residential units, and these are still built right now, or maybe some are modular, but they're building them on small lots, and you're making them available for homeownership opportunities. And what they're doing is they're basically allowing the residents who have these, the opportunity to live in these, to recharge a dollar per square foot per month to move them toward homeownership in a period of time.
Build equity.
And I think as a council, we, you know, we have a buildable land issue in Auburn, like a lot of communities do, but I think we as a council, again, back to our zoning laws, we need to start looking forward at this, and having opportunities perhaps to have a smaller type residential structure we would allow in a smaller subdivision configuration, to allow people to maybe rent, but also perhaps allow them to become homeowners as a stepping stone to something larger.
So I would just say ironically enough, after we did the presentation in our meeting, that was the probably first comment your mayor made, was that we've got to do something for homeownership as well. And coming from the assessor's office standpoint, we are 100 percent in agreement with that. We want you to own homes and pay more taxes, but we are, we are very happy to potentially partner with the city to move that discussion forward as well, and see how the county can partner with the city and be helpful.
Councilmember Wayne.
I'll follow up on the deputy mayor's comment about not necessarily having to locate these kind of projects if we do more than this one, or even that one, right next to services. I think that's ideal, but I also think it doesn't begin to get us into the prototyping stage of the thing that Claude's describing that we all want, in addition to the homeless problem, we want to get homeownership again. So I would encourage you to look all around. I do think that it would be good if we could write into the code some way that these tiny house situations would have to have an onsite manager. And I don't know, Kevin, whether that's something that can actually be done, it's an operational thing, but I think it would make me a lot more amenable to some sites you might select if I knew that there was a person who was overseeing the operation of those 100 houses or whatever we might get to in tiny houses eventually.
So far, the Compass Housing Project in Columbia City has onsite service and management. The potential with Valley Cities would be very similar. As we look at other sites and have those discussions, we can figure something out, because there will be a service provider element to this with wraparound services.
Councilmember Coleman, do you have anything to say?
I'm just smiling at you.
Okay. Councilmember Marco Wells.
Yeah, I see in the literature here that you're looking for operation costs, and so I have a couple of questions related to that. What would you anticipate that to be, per unit? For how long? And doesn't that put us in the real estate business, and I don't want to be a landlord? So can you kind of work that whole concept for me?
That will depend a lot on the level of services that we provide.
Okay.
And that's not a direct answer to your question. I realize what you're getting at, and that can be a very significant and ongoing project. I don't mean to underplay it. We don't have an answer to that yet because we don't know how the configuration, how many, and what level of services. It's very site-specific and service provider-specific, as well as the cost of utilities to that site. And I think that's the process we're going through right now with the architect in Valley Cities, to try to put a number on that community, whether it's eight or 13, and what level of services. Loriann, you want to?
I would just add, you know, I hear a lot of what everyone's saying about the density and about adding more people with disabilities or homeless and similar populations to this area. I just want to also make sure that from a property operations standpoint, for feasibility and sustainability, which I think we all want, we want this to be sustainable. We need more units at a location, so to have 24 units in one location is very small, and it's not your average amount of units you would have for a homeless housing project, especially if you want sustainability. And so my recommendation would be to look at that as well. And so part of the operation cost is going to change drastically. If you choose to move 13 units to an off-site property six miles from services or more, that's going to change. Where we're at, we have some infrastructure, we have some support, you have, you know, management that can help to fill in because we're already in that area, working at other properties there. So it does add a lot of value. Again, I understand that we don't want to overpopulate a certain area with any certain specific demographic, but I do think that this is not a huge concentration of folks meeting these demographics and that the community is feasible to it.
Here, Beckett.
And just a reminder that that site is already zoned to have those additional units there. So this isn't, this isn't adding to something that already hasn't been approved by that zoning. When Jeff Tate and I spoke a couple weeks ago, his thought was that 12 units could be on that site without changing any type of zoning, and if we wanted to go to 26 units, 13, and stack them, that's where the requirement for potential of a comp plan amendment and a zoning change would have to come in to make it more of a commercial property, so that you wouldn't have that limitation based on the current zoning. But it sounds like there might be even some more possibilities that you and Jeff have spoken about that wouldn't even require that.
It really does depend at the end of the day, and I would just add, as Mary said, everything is right on, it really comes down to some of the considerations talking on the operational side, on the policy side, it really comes down to the features of the property, what the property can accommodate, you know, to Councilmember Wagner's point, any future policy conversations, the council can set standards for the type of development, including an onsite manager, if that's something that this council felt was necessary. One thing I would just mention, since it's been talked about a lot, when you're talking about the per-unit pricing, that also does, or should include, the site development cost. So that, well, $70,000 to $100,000 may be the unit cost, you may have to add $25,000, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 per unit to accommodate the site development cost, which is still way below the $400,000, but it may be a little bit more than $70,000 to $100,000 as well.
On here, it says six units and alternate of 15 if zoning is allowed. I don't see anything about 13, I just have seen 15.
So this sheet needs to be updated. It was an estimate before the architect got a chance to look at it and visit. So the second page is updated as of today. The first page needs to be updated.
Okay, yes.
Lauren, I like, I like the comments that you made, the location being based on the services that the clients may need. So that makes a lot of sense in some regards for certain clients to be close, and maybe some other people who are looking for ownership or something way down the line, that it'd be someplace else. So that was a good clarifying point for me. The other aha moment I had is, we need to come up, as we discuss this, anything more positive than homeless housing, you know, whether it just be tiny houses, or this or anything. Because as we've discussed earlier, the homeless get, and a lot of our people are one paycheck away from it, it's more people than we think, and the homeless has got kind of a bad rap. So we got to come up with a more trendy and positive title. But again, I want to thank you for the clarification of tying location in relationship to services. Thank you.
Mr. Baggett, do you have anything to say before we close?
Not yet. I think as a pilot program, I believe this is a good way to go.
See the cost.
Councilmember Pelosi.
So what are the next steps?
So we will continue a feasibility study, and then we're working on costing it right now, and we'll have a more full report for the city that we would come back with and say, here's closer to where we're at. At the end of the day, we need to get a proposal actually put together that we can send to the city to review, to say whether we need specific changes or not, and then also want to bring back to the council and the city, obviously costing as to what this looks like. And we'll, and I will say that I, I hope to be the only Auburn constituent to bring you free services and money. So I hope I'm on everyone's Christmas card list by the end of the year.
So what is your estimate, the timeline?
For timing?
Well.
You know, just estimate.
I mean, I, I think, skipping right to the end, we would like to have this up and going in May. So it does take time for manufacturing, but before we go to manufacturing, we have to know what the site layout is, what, what the utility situation is, and, and these all have numbers attached to them. So we're at the very early stages of doing that, and so we didn't want to get halfway through the process and then come back to you.
You need a Gantt chart.
Oh, my God.
For the engineers in the room.
Councilmember Wagner.
So for Councilmember Pelosi, I wonder, would it be fair to say that we would have a proposal and feasibility study done in the next 60 days?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This city doesn't have a fire department anymore. We have a Valley Regional Fire Authority. I think you need to have a conversation with them, because I see, you know, tightly-packed houses, sacked houses, having a lot of technical fire issues that I believe will be solvable, but you need to kind of start the conversation, unless you want your, your project to be delayed for years.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One last question. When did you become an Auburn owner?
Auburn, well, not too long ago, actually, and I'm in Trail Run, so I'm right off 277th there, yeah, and I, I have to tell you, I was, I was born and raised in Kent, lived there my whole life, and moving to Auburn was scary, even though it's across the street from Kent almost, but it wasn't scary in a sense of, you know, moving to Auburn, it was, it was scary in a sense of leaving my specific neighborhood and city that I loved, lived in, but I've got to tell you, I love Auburn, and I think the council and mayor and, and really the investments you've made in the community, it shows, and I run every day from my house down to the golf course, and I love it, and my neighborhood's great, my community's great, and immediately got on your parks board, and have been having a blast, but just really appreciate the city of Auburn and what you all have been doing. And so as we've had these discussions as to where to go, you know, people suggested Tuck Willa and Seattle and eastside places, but I think Auburn's second to none, and I think you all should be really proud of that.
Well, welcome.
You should feel more comfortable now, because, you know, we all both have some 277th.
And, you know, when you have your unit out here, you can go down and use the inner urban to run.
Perfect.
Yes.
Perfect.
So what month do you think you're going to do that?
You know, you all tell me, and we'll raise community awareness, and I'll do it before I knock on those doors to let the neighbors know what we're thinking, so they can come watch as well.
I don't know if we want you living in it, but it would sure be fun to have one so that people could see it.
And that is, and that, council, or Deputy Mayor, excuse me, that is an option. They brought a unit from Blockable to Westlake Park in Seattle, downtown Seattle, so we can check it out, so we can work to.
Yeah.
Auburn's version of Big Brother.
The livestream camera.
Thank you. Is there any other further questions?
Kevin, you were going to maybe mention the issue with fire, fire marshal, do you see any complications?
I was just going to reference the concern Councilmember Wagner raised, that Jeff and Steve have had some preliminary conversations with Valley Regional Fire Authority staff, and as we get into the feasibility stage, then we brought in the conversations, the regular members of our conversations, as we get into looking at different alternatives. So to Councilmember Wagner's point, they'll be early involved, and we always encourage professionals such as kind of associates to reach out on their own as well and have those conversations.
I, I have a question, Chief Lee. This is direct to you. How do you feel about bringing in this into that neighborhood?
I think the police department loves the idea, you know, it gives people a place to go, and keeps them off the street, gives them, you know, some self-worth, so I think we're supportive of it.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I'll leave cards here, so if you all have questions or anything, you can reach out to me, and I'd be happy to follow up with you, and especially you, Councilmember.
Thank you all for coming.
You love Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to our human services funding, and that's with Dana again.
Yes, one more time, and this is probably a conversation more led by Councilmember Trout and Deputy Mayor Wales, and what's included in your packet is a listing of recommendations for possible priorities, priority setting for future funding of human services, and I spoke with Erica, I apologize, I missed that last meeting, but again, as we said, the focus areas we've been discussing for a while, they've been set for a long time, and we've gone back into our historical documents and don't know exactly when, but we know it's been a long time ago. So through discussions, some, some new proposed areas of focus are around diversion, food and healthcare, with some sub-areas in there, and then a tiered system to support the providers who support residents around capital projects, around services and CDBG. So this is really just in front of you to kind of digest and see where it sits with you all, and if there is agreement, discussion, concern moving forward.
We had a really nice conversation with Erica, and sadly to say that Erica has left us. She no longer is working with us, and she took another position in Tacoma, and so we have, but before she left, she went and she searched for someone to take her place, and it's someone that is very informed, and she's been doing this type of work for quite some time, and she also knows Mr. De Corsi. Mr. De Corsi knows her, because he worked with her, so we're really looking forward to working with her. I was hoping she'd be here tonight so that we could get to know her.
We haven't hired anyone.
Oh, you haven't hired anyone yet?
Finished the interview process last week, we have made an offer, and we are.
Oh, I did not know that. I thought she had already been hired, and, okay, I'll take that back.
Yeah.
But she did talk about her, so anyways, but these are some of the things that we talked about, and the diversion was something that we thought that we really needed to look into. Largo, do you want to talk a little bit about these and how we came about to doing these?
Well, we did, as we kind of looked at the, the current focus groups, and then we looked at our list of 44 agencies that we have been funding. Some are new each year, and we looked through them to see if we think that the current need has shifted over the years. And we decided that in the field of education, that we have the Auburn Foundation, we have PTAs, we have communities and schools, we have the SAHA's fund, and we have another, a lot of things out there that help for marginal, kids that have marginalized finances or needs in education, and that maybe our field was not education. We also looked at healthcare, and we looked at the investment that we've been making with our own public health and, and some other types of things, that we weren't starting with healthcare with having given them nothing, because you know of the support that we've done for, for public health. But we felt that there were some specific areas in healthcare where we could not come up with significant support, and that was in the area of dental and glasses, and mental health, I think will always be on the list, and some special needs where it may relate to, maybe somebody needs a special splint, or a special ramp, or a special type of wheelchair or something, that's, that's sometimes very difficult to find funding for. The area of food, we saw that as one of our primary responsibilities, and we tried to make it generic enough for, to, to include things like the senior pantry, and some of the senior programs that we do, and meals on wheels, and those types of things. We didn't feel, based on the monies that we had, that we could do much regarding housing, but that we could cut off the spigot to some of the unhoused, our future unhoused people, by helping with rental assistance, or arrears, or eviction prevention, if there was something that was happening, because there was a healthcare need in the family, and they had to use the $100 for some kind of medication, and so we thought we could do some kind of preventative things. We then felt that this was time to share with you, and then we thought we should kind of figure out maybe percentages that, of the money that we give, maybe 30% or 60% should go to diversion, and 40% for food, and nothing for whatever, but we felt that we should prioritize these to kind of give a ballpark, or maybe we did, they don't need to be prioritized, and then if all the requests come in for diversion, then all the money would go to diversion. The next thing we did after we left that kind of open to come back to council, was we felt that we needed to, currently we get about 450,000 from the block grant, we match it, and then sometimes there's a little bit more there, and that maybe we would like to set aside something for capital projects that grows over time, so that, I'll never go away, Rich, the food bank, you know, that we, over a couple of years, now we can't do that maybe out of the block grant money, but we can do it out of the match, set aside and bank a certain amount. And then there's always going to be the need for some direct services, and an example of that might be the direct services, if we were to go to these little, the tiny houses, and we, it turned out that to, for the operating costs, we might need something, that that could be in direct services. So we've been doing a lot of brainstorming, we've met two or three times, and we just thought that we'd bring it back to you and kind of let, throw it out there and see what you're thinking, because you probably have more ideas.
And like Largo said, we would like to see a pot of money put aside for emergencies, so that we can, they can be able to get into it and be able to use those funds. So it was, it was really nice sitting down and talking to Erica, and she came up with a lot of these ideas as well, so that's why we brought this back to, to council, to say. Councilmember Wagner.
Yes, we've invested a lot in housing repair, and I guess I've kind of had it come home to me, as I've been part of the Finance Review Committee, and I see those bills for 4,000, 8,000, 10,000 to repair somebody's roof. I don't even see that here.
No, it's under the block grant.
Yeah, that's out of that city.
That's a standard portion of the block grant.
Okay.
What we're talking about is the match that we give, but the, the CDBG grant would require the cost for the administrator and the repairs, and those things that are inherent into the actual grant. We're talking about the discretionary monies that we match.
Well, I still think you ought to list it somewhere, when you say new areas of focus, that we haven't lost housing repair, because it's a pretty big element of our human services now.
Okay, Councilmember, what is that? I was going to get to you. Councilmember Pelosi, I was.
It's true, right, that CDBG, we can't set aside, we've got to use it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So it would come out of our general fund portion, we would have set aside if we did that. Yeah, I kind of like that, for capital projects, you know, and maybe we can use some of that to help our, the project that was here, just here.
The cubicles.
Maybe the 3 million won't cover everything, but we have a little rainy day fund that we can contribute to, or other, that one, or other, other projects to, because I'm really bullish about that project. We got to do something to get homeless housed. I mean, as, I'm going to give you guys an example. I was down at the golf course at our last Rotary meeting. A citizen came up to me and he said, oh, see the homeless over there? They're camped out by the river. And I didn't say, why don't you call 911, you know, because every citizen should be participating in calling 911. Well, anyway, I called 911, and I talked to our good police, they, they called me and told me they had stopped by, and they were just in transit, and they're just kind of resting. Well, here's, here's my gripe. So the next day, I'm out at the golf course.
Still in transit.
And I look over at the area where they were resting, there was a big pile of garbage, trash, that they had left behind. That's the problem with the homeless, that's where they're getting the bad name. They don't pick up. They trash it for all of us around this table, and that's baloney. That's, that's my speech.
So what we tried to do with this, and I added down here, Rich, your comment about being more inclusive as to what the CBD, CDBG is covering, because that's a good point. But what we've, what we've tried to do is cover the ongoing needs, healthcare, food and diversion, the potential for us, under capital projects, to set aside some, but not out of the CDBG money, but set aside a little bit for a project, and then under direct services, we could do something where we're providing a big direct service, which could possibly be the operation costs of, say, the little houses. So we tried to create ongoing visionary for some long-time things, but some intermediate big things, while still complying with the requirements of the grant.
Yes, Councilmember Wagner.
I was talking to a council member from Buellup recently, was when they, after they cleared out the Buellup River Camp, which was 100 people or so, and he said he finally decided that he had to provide free garbage service and garbage cans, because it was such a mess, and I think we ought to consider that, too, for concentration areas where these folks are camped, is a garbage can there, and don't charge them to pick it up.
I, I sort of agreed with that, because I was at the golf course when several of them walked up, and they wanted to use the restroom, and a lot of the citizens were very upset about it, so they went in and they talked to Chris, and he had to, the young man who was working behind the counter had to ask them to please leave, they couldn't use the restrooms, they could use the restrooms across the street at the park, so they did, but the people around there were very disturbed with seeing the homelessness around and living across the street, so, yes.
I think that, I don't know why the homeless would have any less of a garbage problem than we do. We collect it in our garage, we wait until there's the biannual pickup, and then we miss it and we kick ourselves. So I think that we could help the citizens with being a little bit more aggressive with pickup, to the point where if maybe other people would help pick up some of the stuff too, if they knew that there was going to be some way to get it picked. if they knew that there was going to be some way to get it picked up. So that might be something that we want to look at.
What really disturbed me, you guys, was two blocks from them were garbage cans in the park. They're not, they're not, they're not, they're probably smart people. I mean, they could have figured out.
Struggling with survival.
Mayor Nancy?
So one of the things that we have talked about at the Ray of Hope Resource Center, and you heard Debbie allude to it tonight, are ways to volunteer in the community and have a reimbursement of extra laundry services or a $5 card at a fast food restaurant. We have also talked about the possibility of having volunteers come out and help with cleanup of areas. It doesn't have anything to do with any type of union negotiation, so we don't run into any issues there. But the possibility for individuals who are at the Ray of Hope Resource Center to be able to go out and volunteer in the community to receive either additional laundry services, gift cards, something like that. And so that is part of what we're working on with.
And Bill, you know, it's not just the homelessness that dumped their garbage out there. I have, I went fishing out there, fly fishing, and I saw dryers, dishwashers, garbage cans and stuff like that, all down below. And then also shopping carts already buried in the water. So it's, you know, it's people that feel that that's a dumping ground for their garbage. So we've got to kind of also be careful and not just to be labeling the homelessness for doing all that mess because there are several citizens that are using that place as a dumping ground. So we got to kind of be vigilant. And if we see something like that, I think we need to report it and have it picked up. But we got to be careful not to always be labeling, and I know they do camp out there, but not always be labeling the homelessness.
Who camps out there?
There's homelessness that camp out along the bank there, so, yes.
What I'd like to do is for you to cogitate over this. And then Yolanda and I will continue to meet with Dana and continue to do some refinements. We've got a couple of good suggestions from Rich and kind of move forward with this, with some more ideas from her department. Again, the intent of this is not for next year, but for the year after. So we're not in any big rush and are just kind of brainstorming.
Councilmember Holman, I saw your expression.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how all this, you've made several statements. We've tried to do this, we've tried to this, we met with Dana. Do we have an ad hoc committee here going on? Or this is just something that?
We're the committee. I'm the chair and she's the vice chair. And we meet with Dana and our resource person, whoever. And we come up with, we come up with it, yeah.
I just needed some.
Special focus there, yeah. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Dana, and we'll set up.
Fire.
Yes. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
She was very cute.
She did forward some recommendations and made sure that some good people were notified.
Okay, thank you. We'll set another meeting here soon with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the other discussion items. Your business and matrix. Bill, last time you were sick, we moved a couple of your items to November so that you would be here.
October.
October.
Right.
Okay.
I can't wait.
Okay. Councilmember Holman?
I have a resource for Councilmember Trout Manuel. Those of us that have been around Auburn a while remember Dr. Mel Senix. His granddaughter is an attorney, and she specializes in immigration. And I had a conversation with her a week ago. And she would be willing to meet with us about some legal rights for undocumented, however this council wishes to proceed with that. So for future discussions, she is a resource. I have her material here. I'll give it to.
I'm glad you said that because I've had some people call me on the DACA, the Dreamers, and they wanted to know my stance on that. And maybe it'd be nice to bring somebody in also to talk about that. So.
Yeah, so off-camera, after, I'll give you her name and phone number and contact information.
Yes, Councilmember De Corsi.
If you can make contact, can we set this up for your next focus group and bring that person in?
Right.
Okay, great. Anything else for the matrix? If there's nothing else, I'm going to call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.